Good evening and welcome to West Seminole Central School District's work session, Tuesday, January 21st, Board of Education. In fact, we can begin with the pledge, please. Mr. Dalbo, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent. If I can have a motion to go into executive for collective negotiations pursuant to Article 14 of the Civil Service Law and the employment history of particular individuals.
I'll motion.
Jody, may I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Second to go? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. There's one, two, three, four, six of us are yes, no noes, and Jan will join us when she gets here. Thank you. Excellent. And we're back. Thank you, everyone. I know we're shooting for 30 minutes, but things sometimes take extra time, and I really appreciate everyone's patience on that. And thank you for being here this evening. We know everyone has a lot of stuff going on. I personally have nothing going on in my life. I'm kidding. But I do appreciate everyone's patience with that. Thank you. We will move on from, we did the pledge, we did executive, we'll do our public comments. The public comment section has a time set aside for the community to speak directly to the Board of Education. You should note that the first public comment section is only for items related to the agenda items. The second section is for any other comments. Each speaker is given three minutes with a total allotted time to last no more than 30 minutes. When called, please step up to the podium and state your name and address. Please be respectful in your comments and do not divulge any personal or confidential information. The information shared will be carefully considered and the appropriate person will contact you. If you'd like to be contacted, please leave your information with the district clerk. Do we have anyone who'd like to speak tonight on any agenda items? Excellent. That was my last reading there, depending on the public one at the end, and appreciate it. You got it right. And we'll move on to our superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks again for being here tonight. So, you're starting to wind down. You've obviously had a series of great concerts throughout the district. We had scholarship nights, we've had some great athletic contests, been able to actually host some great athletic events as well. You know, our graduations are happening this week. Very excited about that. Less excited about the heat and humidity that's supposed to accompany that, but I think it's great that we're going to be on our own fields. So just congratulations to all of our graduates. Looking forward to those ceremonies. Also, just wanted to, I guess, remind everyone what a busy place the district is going to be this summer. We have a variety of summer programming taking place, some of it a little new, so that's exciting for us as well. Also, some of our capital improvement projects are going to be continuing and probably ramping up a little bit over the summer, too. So we, at this point, you've got, actually, also, too, we're going to have capital improvement projects going to continue at West Middle. There's going to be also some work in the main office, too, and some hardening of the office space over there. The traffic circle is going to be reconfigured as well. West Middle's not going to resemble itself by the end of the summer. The concession stand over at West Senior is going to be starting up pretty soon. West Senior's also getting some new roofing. And then the East Senior, I know people are very happy about this one, the East Senior, East Middle Road, the rest of it, they're looking to be able to repave the rest of that road as well. So that's the plan for the summer as of this point. I see a lot of people nodding their head with great approval. Almost seems to be a little bit more exciting than the concession stand in some people's minds, so, and I'm looking back in your direction. So, anyway, I'll keep my comments brief this evening. I know we do have some presenters here. And also, I just want to mention, Mr. Bead, that our assistant superintendents, we were going to forego their reports unless anybody had any specific questions for them, just out of respect for everyone's time this evening. So I did, I chatted an email later this afternoon, but if there's any specific questions, by all means, please, they're happy to come up, but just out of respect for time, so.
Anyone have anything with, something to address?
I don't know.
Great. And I'm going to, I'm going to say this, my wife always says she watches the meetings. She knows you're from West Seminole because she'd say, "Ruth," like me.
Chick de Waga.
Let's get the assistant superintendent's report, student representatives. Clearly, our student representatives have a lot going on, great kids. I do not believe, were they seniors?
I think one was a junior, but I put together it was a senior.
One was a junior, so hopefully we'll have one back and the other one, senior, congratulations. I'm sure we'll see you one of the next two nights, depending on who they were. They sent me a text and said, just to say a lot of amazing things that the high school's going on, and they look forward to graduations tomorrow night and Thursday night. And let's keep them rein free. We'll move on to recognitions. We have our top 10 high school students here. How are we going to handle our top 10 high school students?
Mr. Brinker, Mr. Wunicki are both here from the high schools.
Both, oh, both of you guys are here. Excellent.
Nicole actually made a nice little visual graphic, too. Oh, come on up, come on up.
Perfect color for you. Aw. Go back to green.
Yeah.
Didn't you do that?
Who made it?
It's pretty cool.
I won't be hearing a lot.
They're pretty.
It's right here. Are we going to go back and forth?
Might be tough to toggle.
Perfect. Okay. At West Senior, we had 10 phenomenal students, phenomenal. Two of them are here, so I'm going to call you up when I get to your names. Number 10 is Josh Jablonski. These are their weighted averages, all right? And I always tell people, just to understand, these grades started in seventh and eighth grade, eighth grade, where they start taking some classes. Also, at West Senior, this is the top 3.5 percent. So when you talk about a big school like West Senior, top 10, top 10 is different for different schools. You know, if you go to a smaller school and they have 68 kids, obviously, the math starts working, but this is top 3.5 percent. So Rach, we're going to get to you. So Josh Jablonski, 98.57. Peter Beiki, Peter, come on up here. Great Beiki family. Our last Beiki marching band going to RIT, right? Good job, Peter.
Congratulations.
98.97. Liz Moran, number eight, going to Nazareth, 99.20. Kenny Urbansik, that is number seven. Kenny, I'm going to say tomorrow, I'll let the bag out, hopefully, nobody's watching. Kid hasn't missed a day of school. Ever. Right? I think his sister also got the award a couple of years ago. 99.27. Jordan Evans, Buff State, 99 is number six, 99.35. Gabby Filipski, Ohio State, 99.939. Maya Tuberig, 99.46. Shelby, Shelber Snyder, who will be our emcee tomorrow. Albany, 99.56. Sam, Samantha Fleming, Pitt, 100.47. She's our valedictorian. She will be speaking tomorrow. And Rachel, come on up here. The great Rakiki family. So this is Rachel Rakiki. She's our, she's going to say a lot of words tomorrow. We're going to put a nice West medal on her tomorrow. She's our valedictorian, our one valedictorian, at 100.89. There's only 2.316 that separates. So, you know, I love my math, I love my statistics. The state recognizes 85 percent is mastery. You know something, 85 percent is huge. They're 98 to 100. Like statistically speaking, what is that? Like, that's phenomenal, and it's, it's going to, it started in eighth grade, but it really didn't. Probably started in kindergarten, when your parents back there who are filming you, who show up to everything, are so proud of you, and they just, you learn from that. So I always want to build my confidence in my students before you go to Hillbert, before you go to RIT. This is confidence. So you will have no issues in college. You'll do phenomenal, and we'll see you tomorrow, and we'll hear from you, right?
If you want to come up closer and get a picture, you can.
Get pictures.
Looking better than far away.
Did you want them to stay there with Mr. Brinker?
Yeah, you need to stay there.
Principal Brinker, do you really want to be against the blue on there with a W?
That's phenomenal, too. The blue.
Pretend like you like each other.
Can I just ask, can you come by the logo? Just right now. Very good. Maybe I'll do something here. Doesn't want to trigger, I'm glad I got a little bit. Mom, you want to get in here?
Can I get a picture?
I'd love to. Very good. More than married. Nice, thank you.
Congratulations, guys.
Again, thanks for honoring these kiddos. I had several of them come up to me and they go, "Mr. Wunicki, we feel really bad, but we've requested off so many times that our bosses are ready to kill us, so if we don't come," I'm like, "You're still graduating, so don't worry." You know, Lily Keezak with a 98.497. Again, this always is pretty amazing to me how close these averages can get, that we get down to the hundredth of a point, and how competitive they start out as freshmen, a lot of these kiddos, and they're, you know, "What did you get on your tests?" And then they're motivating each other. Danny Walters with a 98.499. His parents, employees of the district, his family's aunt in the district, so Danny's doing awesome. Sarah Colby, 98.585. One of those kiddos where, again, and just like at West, where they're not just doing the academics, they're involved in athletics, marching band, student council president, yet somehow still pulling these grades off year after year on such a consistent basis. Elizabeth Osmansky, 98.62. Isabella Garcia with a 98.72. Dasha Korsch, who speaks four languages, the seal of like quad literacy, she earned her some this year, with a 98.87. Sophia Manzella, a 98.949. Emma Murphy, who's our emcee tomorrow, kind of taking after her family where they all finish in the top 10, 99.113. Our salutatorian, Alana Solomon, was able to join us tonight. She's got a pretty fantastic speech for us tomorrow with her 99.381. And Sabrina Blank with a 99.908, our valedictorian, who also has a pretty fantastic speech for us tomorrow, or Thursday evening, or Thursday. No, I invited them to eat at the West. Did you invite them to the West, too? Yeah. Well, you know what, they're academy kids, they've been there before, so that's good. But again, we're so proud of all of these kiddos, and Alana, thank you for making the time to come here tonight. I know it's hot out, there's a lot going on, and you're just finally enjoying some time to kind of relax and come down with no pressure for a few months. So, thanks for being here, and thank you all for taking the time to honor the accomplishments of these kids.
Thank you.
Come on up, picture time.
Picture.
Come on up, picture time.
And then I think we're going to get a group with college.
He arranged a meeting for a student.
Nine University. I'm going to try to stop, we're getting everybody together, both principals and...
No, that's okay.
You don't have to sit against the wall, you can just actually face it right there at that angle. Good. That actually is perfect. And just a... Thank you. That's sweet, thank you.
Okay, great job. Congratulations.
Thank you. Again, thank you for coming tonight. Appreciate it. We can move on to our recess. How's the board feel? Five-minute recess, take care of anything, or do we want to move on?
I don't think so, I think we're good.
We will begin with 6A. May I have a motion on 6A, please?
I'll make a motion.
Diane, make a motion to accept 6A. May I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Move 7-0. May I have a, may I have a motion on 6B?
I'll make a motion.
Diane, motion to accept 6B. May I have a second? Ed can second, I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Nay.
Opposed, nay.
So, motion passes 5-2. May I have a motion on 6C?
I'll make a motion.
Diane, motion to accept 6C. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Molly, thank you, Molly. Second for Molly. Any discussion? All in favor of 6C? Aye. Anyone opposed? 7-0. If I can have a motion on 6D?
I'll move.
I can move on 6D and E. May I have a motion on 6D and E?
I'll move on D. Did you hear?
Yes, Jan. I just want to get to the right spot so I can write it down, thank you. Jan, make a motion to accept 6D and E. And may I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Diane, second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Move 7-0.
We actually have somebody that's receiving tenure here tonight, Ms. Fowler.
We have Colleen Ty, who's here tonight. She is one of our speech pathologists, and she is receiving tenure tonight. Colleen works with our 613 program at Clinton Elementary, has been a meaningful part of their program for many years. So congratulations, Colleen.
Thank you, thank you for being here. May I have a motion on 7A through D?
I'll move.
Diane, may I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Jody, any discussion on A through D? Everyone had a chance to look through? All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Move 7-0. I'm going to look for a motion, and anyone wants to stop me on all of eight?
I'll move.
And eight goes through... What's the last eight here? R, wow. 8A through 8R. Diane made a motion to accept 8A through 8R. May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Jan, any discussion on anything through 8A through 8R? I'll give you guys a second to page through, just to make sure.
I'm going, I guess I'll just put it this way, I'm going to vote no, not because I'm voting no on all of them, but because I didn't ask you to compartmentalize one of them out, so it just affects E, and the reason I'm going to vote no is just, again, for the certifications. So, we don't have to, it's not going to matter.
Point of just clarification for me, you're going to vote no?
I'm going to vote no, but it's really only based on certifications in E, so.
Okay. Any other discussion?
You said through R?
Yes, through R. I believe R was the last under eight, if I'm not mistaken, yes. And I'm in no rush if we're still thumbing through, I know it's a lot of information.
I don't know if we've ever had a queue on our agenda before.
I know, that's why I was...
Just saying.
A lot of summer positions.
Yeah, a lot of great stuff going on. We got a nod from Molly, we got a nod from Diane, Jody, Mr. Pete, this could be one of your last nods. Jan, close? Give you a second. Again, no rush, Liz, you're good.
I'm good, yeah.
Good. Jan, you all set? Any discussion on anything? Okay, great. No discussion? All in favor? Aye. Anyone, no? Jody? Move 6-1. I will take, probably, again, the last meeting, I probably got to ask this again. I do accept the reports, right? Okay. May I have a motion on nine, all of nine?
I'll move.
Liz? Liz, motion to accept all of nine. May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Pete, thank you, Pete. Any discussion on anything from nine? No? All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? 7-0. Thank you on that. And new business. There's a few things on here, so I will, I'll start with 10A, Reading Rover contract. Reading Rover, is that the book thing? Yeah, okay. I heard we just had a great presentation today from the Women's Club? Right? Some awesome stuff happening with that.
And the B was there, and Spectrum was there, and Rosalie gave a nice description of the program and promoted it.
Yeah, I saw a Facebook post about it that was going on today, so I was glad to see that Women's Club is, they do amazing stuff. Appreciate them. Excited about the Reading Rover. May I have a...
Our Teachers Association and the Administrators Association are also helping to support it as well.
Oh, great. Oh, yeah, I figured there's a lot of people, I apologize about that. Sorry. I haven't seen the story yet.
Yeah, check it out.
Yeah, yeah, it's amazing the amount of people involved in it, and I look forward to someday getting that truck, their own personalized vehicle, if we could just get rid of the vehicle shortage, I'm sure we'll be okay. Okay, may I have a motion on A, 10A?
I'll move.
Diane, second. Diane, motion to approve 10A. Jody, second to approve 10A. Any other discussion? I guess I should have waited for discussion, I apologize. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? 7-0. B, 10B, reorganization meeting date may change. May I have a motion on 10B, please?
I'll move.
Diane, 10B, motion to accept. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Liz, second. And discussion?
Can we add a time on that, please?
Sure, let me just check. We're looking to move our reorg meeting from July 7th to July 6th. Going to bump it up a day, at what time?
Six.
Six PM? Just making sure. 6 PM. Is everyone good? Any other discussion on that? Again, thank you, everyone, for jumping through hoops to make it happen. I know it's difficult getting seven people plus two to agree on a date so close, so thank you.
Yeah, there will be six.
What was that?
I said it, there will only be six of us.
And I'll be voting no on it because we couldn't come to an agreement on a date that worked for everybody.
Oh, that's okay.
Before, everybody wasn't going to be here.
Okay.
I was meaning more than you, and you're the one that's supposed to be here.
But it wouldn't be fun without a no vote. How about we move to, anyone, all in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed?
Oppose.
Oppose. So that would be 6-1. Excellent. Pass the 6-1. Donation. May I have a motion to accept, a motion on 10C? Obviously, donation from William C. Biddlecombe Scholarship. That's awesome. Molly, accept, or may I have a second to accept?
I'll second.
Liz, any discussion on that? Again, that's an awesome thing. We love when people are involved in that. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? 7-0. That would be a... I'm on a roll, I'm close enough. May I have a motion to, a motion on 10D?
I'll move.
Diane, may I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Liz, any discussion on bid awards for, looks like athletic supplies and equipment, and music supplies and equipment?
Have we always done this, where we voted on the bid awards? I guess I don't remember in the past doing this.
I think it probably, I would think that we have in the past, to be quite honest with you, because I think, I mean, you're talking about a decent chunk of money that you're buying, purchasing equipment, so.
I like, I like, I like...
It's because, it's, you know, it's an expense, an expenditure, that's why we do it.
My guess is a lot of times, I mean, probably more qualified presidents would have probably lumped them into a more group, just to make that joke, but I was going kind of individually on a few of them, so I just continued on the roll.
It's because of the expenditure that's on them.
Yeah. I mean, I'm happy we're doing it. We don't want to be using crap all the time, so nice that we're replacing it. Oh, sorry. Any other discussion on that? May I have a motion to accept? Diane, I got a second, so, all in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? 7-0. 10E, may I have a motion to accept 10, or a motion on 10E?
I'll move.
Liz? Liz, motion to accept 10E. May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Diane, any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Move 7-0. 10F?
Can we do the rest of 10?
We can do anything we want, within reason. 10, I was thinking about doing that, but it was so close. How about this, may I have a motion on 10F through...
Aye.
10I. If there's no motion, I'll go back to doing them individually.
I'll make a motion.
Is this our, is this our last motion that we're going to make?
I think so.
It looks like it.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, could we have Peter make the motion, please?
I'll move.
Only if he wants to.
I'll move.
Excellent. Peter, may I have a second? You want a second also?
I'll second.
Jody? Any discussions? Good idea, Jan, appreciate that.
Well, we really appreciate Peter's service to the board, and this is his last business meeting, and it's his last business motion, so we thank you for being with us.
Thank you. Thank you for your service, Peter.
Absolutely.
I don't know that people always have an appreciation, be watching at home just how many hours the board members put in, and we could double your pay and it still wouldn't be great, so just thank you for all your service.
We got you a card, and I believe, if you remember, the last time we were together, we told you at some point, we'll figure out a time when we get through graduations to take you out to your favorite wing place.
Sure.
And we'll enjoy dinner with you one last time, because you'll never talk to us again. But we did give you two bottles of water.
One last dinner, that's all you got.
One last time. I mean, you are, it could be someone that looks like you, we'll see. I mean, you are, it could be someone that looks like you, we'll see who shows up.
Maybe.
We'll see who shows up.
He has a twin, I heard. He has a twin.
Peter? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Seven zero.
No wonder you've never had a problem making a meeting before, you're here all the time.
That's funny.
Public comment. We'll move on to the public comment section. Is there anyone here that would like to make public comments on anything that was not dealt with, with the agenda? No one's walking up? Okay, we'll move on to.
Presentations.
Thirteen A, pupil services.
I'm just going to do a little bit of a foot hop, and John and Rick will first.
That's up, that's up to me to decide. I haven't.
If you decide.
Okay. Yeah, I have no, no issues with that.